Board of Selectmen meeting to order. At seven P M. Two Selectmen present, Mike Conriss is absent. We get the fire chief present, Leo Martell is recording for the general public. We have Joe Sewell, and he one of our residents, or the town administrator is present tonight. Okay, Justin, I have some meeting minutes for all business.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes on May second, twenty twenty four as amended.
I'll second that. Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Here they are, just got to look at Mike looking around here. Big one, Justin. We'll start a pile just pass you from me in there and we'll give it all back toward the ampersale. Okay, I'm gonna open up for public comment now. Nothing from the public. Okay. Bring it to town business. Joe, you're first on the agenda tonight.
This. Okay.
Yep, go right ahead.
This document you made out with the police department there in. Twenty-three.
Yep.
It's not working.
Lean, that's the one you said you had a copy of back in the office.
As soon as Mitch Bernard finds out that there's no parking ordinance. He's left everything in the road that he's got there from time to time.
Yep.
And. Now, I don't think there was any one time when a fire truck. Or an ambulance, two of them. Could get down through there. Side by side. If that's what that means. I'm gonna wait till she gets that car.
Yeah, just so you read it, Joe, I do have a. I do have a report here from the police department that. They were called on May first, eight fifty-four P M. And it does show that Mr. Bernard had. Blocked the old Route thirteen with a truck and trailer. And there was a sign, do not enter. And. Holmes Road was unobstructed. But the old, the old section of Old Route thirteen was. Blocked. It does not say in this report what they did about that, though.
Well, I'll tell you what he did. I called him. I wanted to go down the road, see if I could get through. I had a little daylight left. I got around the corner and it was blocked and nobody's around.
Yep.
So I called the police department. I forgot his name now.
Yeah, it's in here.
He was the one that was on duty May first, seven o'clock, eight o'clock, something like that.
Yeah, it doesn't actually have the. The. Name of the other one out.
Well, anyway, he said he had an emergency, but he'd go down and look afterwards.
Okay.
Well, I got sick of waiting, so I went home. Then he called me.
Okay.
And he said, as long as people can get up Holmes Road, that's okay. So. Well.
Yeah, we know it's not supposed to be blocked, so. They didn't do anything at night? Did they do anything the next day?
Next day, uh. I don't know if they did anything or not, but he was gone the next day, I don't know, nine, ten o'clock.
And did he move the trailer the next day on his own, or you don't remember?
That's still there. It's been there three weeks.
Oh, it is.
More. It's still there tonight. Just a trailer alone now. You can get one car down through there, but that's all.
And. I know in the past he had parked some stuff on his side. Is this park closer to your side or closer to his side, or?
Or I put parks that sometimes close to his side.
Yeah.
But just not enough. If you remember that pile of wood that the town told me had to move? He moved it not long ago, like nine months later?
Yep.
And, oh, I forgot my camera. So now he parks his white truck right there in the road, right on the corner where the wood was. And leaves it there. I got pictures of all this stuff. I haven't got them developed, but I had my camera and I didn't bring it with me. I'll show you them pictures.
Okay.
Just someone that was signing and copying.
I remember doing this.
I did ask for a report from the police department on the event. They should have that in your packet.
Yeah, it, it, it tells us that the road was blocked, but. Holmes Road wasn't blocked, but it didn't tell us any of. Any actions that they took to rectify it, so. Apparently he called Joe back and said, as long as Holmes Road's not blocked. He wasn't concerned about it. So apparently back then. After reading all the local laws and stuff as far as trespassing. Blocking the road. Parking on one side of that road would be allowed as long as it wasn't blocking the road. In other words, you could park on your side of the road as long as he could still get through. But on that evening, it looks like the road was totally blocked.
Yeah.
Because, so.
However, if I park stuff on my side of the road. And he parks stuff on his side of the road, nobody's gonna get through.
Nobody can get through.
Not a fire truck and an ambulance. For sure.
Yeah. Remember doing that? No, I could remember exactly what we had put that time as well. Um, I think that we will, uh. We'll definitely review it with the chief and make sure that. The guys know that it can't be blocked a hundred percent. And we'll revise them, you know, we'll have them review that letter. You know, showing that some parking off the edge of the road is okay, but it still has to be. The travel way.
Well, if you wanna get a fire truck and an ambulance down through there side by side. You can't have anything out in the road.
Yeah. And this, when he's parking on that road, it's, it's beyond his house where he's?
Oh, no, it's on town. This is old town road.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay.
He's got junk in the way down there, but you don't wanna bother with that.
Okay. That's right. I'm sorry. I thought that's where it was.
No.
Okay, this is in the town section of the road.
Right, hundred feet of town road there.
Okay.
Uh, you can't park nothing out there.
Okay. Okay.
So thi- this, this isn't working. This other one that we had before that, this document here. Back in twenty-one. The selectman elected to uphold this. You've seen this.
I'm sure I have, but it brought it to our attention long.
This one worked better than that last one you just made. Let me read it to me.
Oh, two, two thousand and two.
Yeah.
Was that worth less?
Yeah.
Was he there in two thousand and two? Has he been in town that long?
Well. I'm not sure. It might have been the previous owner, Michael, that was there. He hasn't on the. Can we take a copy of this one, Joe? She can copy it right here. I do remember seeing this one and.
Take copies.
It does say that it can't be blocked in either, any way.
Take copies of everything you got there.
Just a few notes, so just take a copy of this.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. That worked better than this other one. But then you gotta have somebody that wants to enforce.
Right. The thing is, um. Short-term parking on the shoulder of the road. You know, anybody can do that anywhere throughout town. We don't have an ordinance against that. Where we look into it, but they can't block the roadway for sure, so. We'll have to address this with the police department again. Double check with Chris. And I understand fully about the police department coming down and. Thinking it's a civil matter and kind of leaving.
No, no, this is.
I know, I know, but I, I understand completely that they, you know. After some things happen for a period of time. You know, they, they consider it kind of a civil matter and they. They may not, uh. You know, do everything at the proper steps because they're.
Well, they, you know, they asked me once about down beyond the town road. They said, you know. Do you have a? What do you call it? I R A, I R S A, or whatever. I've got it right here somewhere.
An I R S A, yeah, we have, we have that.
They asked me if I had one of them. I says, yeah. So they told Mitch to move his stuff even way down past the town road. They just did it once, though.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I think after that, they learned that, you know, some parking on that is allowable, so.
Yeah. One more thing and I'll leave you alone.
Okay, what you got?
Put a sign up on my side of the street that says, do not enter, on a telephone pole. I don't want it there.
Okay.
Now, what do I do? Without getting myself in trouble, just rip it down?
Is it in the town right away?
Yeah.
I think.
It's in the town road also, but it's off to the side. It's on, it's on my side.
We'll go up and have the road agent look at it, because for one, it shouldn't be on the telephone pole. And for two. You know, if that's the section of town road, you can't have that there anyway.
So. Well, he was down there and he saw the sign and Mitch told him that he put it there. Uh, Jeff.
I saw him working there a week or so ago.
Yeah, so. I got a question. This road's a, this town road that goes through there, is it Class seven road? I think we need to all be warned. Is that a Class seven?
Nope.
No, I, my understanding is that up to that little shed that houses the wellhead is Class five.
Yeah.
Beyond that is Class six. We've never discontinued it. And we're not maintaining it and basically it reverts back. Actually, we still have rights to that Class six. It just exists without maintenance. It's not until it gets discontinued. At a town meeting on a warrant that it would revert to the center and you guys would both have.
That's the way it is now.
That's the. That's the way you would have, you'd have to go to a town meeting and have it discontinued.
It is.
I thought the south side.
It is, it says it.
No, that section is discontinued. The ownership goes back to the center of the road where it always was, but they both have rights to use the road to access their property.
Right, and that's why they can't block it.
So it's in a butter, so. It can't be blocked because he has the right to use it.
Oh, so what he is saying, I think I'm hearing, is you wanna put a sign that says private property after?
Mitch put a sign that said, do not enter there, but he has the right to enter.
Oh, he does, absolutely, yeah.
So he's saying he doesn't want the sign there.
You can have it on his side as far as I'm concerned. I don't care about that. I don't want it on my property.
Oh.
So.
Okay.
Uh. Who would take care of that? I don't wanna get myself in trouble. I could rip it down and throw it back on his.
Let us look through it and do it the right way, because I'll have the road agent look at it with us. And the police department, the other thing, it's on a telephone pole, which you can't have it on telephone pole either, regardless.
Oh, I didn't know that.
No.
Oh, good, then it's gonna come down.
Gotta come down one way or another, so.
Yeah.
Let us work on that end of it.
Oh, cool.
If you go take it down, it'll be he said, she said, and then it'll start a. A fight we don't want you getting into, so.
Oh, I'd like to. Trying to force myself.
So let us work on that, okay?
That's all I had.
All right, next, uh, we'll review it with the chief, make sure the guys know. Um, that you have the, you know, make sure that you're able to pass on that section of road. Especially on the town portion of it.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Good enough, thanks.
Thank you.
Good to see you guys, Lee.
Nice to see you. You look great.
Thanks.
Thank you, Joe.
Hey, um, did you reference an I R S A in one of those letters?
Did we reference one?
No, we were talking about the middle of the road.
I'm just wondering if there's something we can give to the police department.
Uh, well.
It says March twelfth, nineteen sixty-three, at the town's annual meeting. Route thirteen was discontinued and abandoned from just below John Mills House.
So that's below the house, but where he's trucked and parked from what he just told us tonight. It's on our town section.
Correct, yeah, Class five.
So. Which. I know that last year when the parking, as long as it's off the edge of the road, kind of. They let that go, but. And the police report says it was completely blocked and the people said, as long as everybody can go up Holmes Road, it's all right. Really isn't all right.
No, they need to be, they, I think they need to get a copy of that letter again.
Yeah, and, um. It's probably one of the newer offices, and I know that sometimes the officers come in and say, oh, that's. You know, that's an.
Civil.
Ongoing civil issue and some things aren't. We have to be very clear, because. It's frustrating for people when they call and then no action's taken when they're trying to do it right.
Okay, what do you, what would you like me to do to inform your PD?
Let's have the, the chief come in.
Give them a copy of this letter?
Yeah, we'll give a copy of that letter and a copy of this one that we made. These two. And, uh.
And then invite him in to talk about it?
Yeah. And why don't we do it non-public? We'll be talking about our employees.
Okay.
Okay. Next week.
The week after.
The week after, next week.
Okay.
In the meantime.
That's the thirtieth.
Can you have Jeff address, uh. Uh, look at the road sign there?
Yep, okay.
And then, um. We can also call the telephone company if that. Sign's not supposed to be on there, I think.
Yeah.
Either road agent or the police should take it off. I don't think we need to wait two weeks to address that.
That's correct, yeah. Okay. I will let chief know. In this police department that it's the town official that is removing that sign.
Yeah.
So that. Mr. Bernard doesn't file a complaint with the police and just.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to know to clarify whether they actually did that. That day, because that doesn't say what they actually did that day.
Yeah.
Just so it's in the record.
He'd say the action of the officer.
Or who the officer was.
Okay.
I mean, we were gonna ask him that night, so if he wants to bring an explanation.
Okay, maybe they should take pictures when they go up there?
Well, they, I think, pretty sure they do. The cameras are on everything, so they're gonna have pictures of it.
Body cam.
So. And Joe said he has pictures of it too, so if we need pictures, I'm sure we get them, but.
Okay.
You remember when we brought Mr. Bernard in here, we talked about it. If all this continues happening, we're gonna have the building moved. Out of the town right away. This building there's. Housing as well or something is in the town right away.
But that's grandfathered. That's what's there before.
Nothing grandfathered. You can't build in the town right away. We never made him move it, because we said, you know, we kinda want this all to go away. And he, he was in agreement to that when he was here. We're trying to, trying to let things settle down there. But anyway, we'll move on to the next item. John Wigan?
Yes, sir.
Come on up, John. You have some information about the ambulance?
Yeah. Got the same book.
Oh, boy.
All good news, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, I hope so. So I'd like to move ahead and get this purchase started.
Okay.
Um. We got three beds, two out of line. I can't, some of these salesmen don't even want to talk there, wanting to meet with it. Won't bring us a demo, won't present anything to us. I don't know, they're too busy or what. I call them all the time and they just don't return phone calls. But this company. Specialty. Vehicles down Massachusetts, they sell this Lifeline brand, which is a quality ambulance. This guy, Al, he probably was a salesman, he's about seventy years old, he can sell ambulances for fifty something years, so. He's a really sharp guy. Knows his stuff, put this proposal together, covers everything, do the truck. So his proposal. And plus, since he gave me this proposal. Ford is up the price of the chassis three times, but he, he's not gonna change his price. So. And he's up the. On allowance, he's gonna give us an hour, he's gonna give us eleven thousand dollars for our ambulance. Which is fourteen years old, which is really unheard of. Nobody else wants to give us any money for it. I'm sure it's all, you know, plays in the numbers, but anyways. Uh, his price is three thirty-nine, three thirty-five. So we have three fifty in the town. Have a go, we did a town meeting, we made it three fifty. So. You know, it's under that, obviously. Uh, there could be a couple additional charges. One is undercoating, like you undercoat at the factory. That's an option they give you. And the other thing is, uh.
On a bigger truck like that, what's that normally run, John?
They charge two thousand.
Okay.
If you do it in the factory. I don't know what a local. Guy would do it, but it kinda seems better to do it there.
Yeah.
You know, when they gotta body suffer from the chassis.
Right.
Uh. So I think it's a, a good truck. It's a good deal. So I'd like to move ahead. The other issue is. Uh, chassis, these other guys can't guarantee a chassis for. Over a year. This guy's got one at the factory with our name on it. So. I gotta let them know, yes, no, because they're not letting go if we don't agree. We don't sign their contract. And the other thing is, the next couple of months, uh. It's a model change on vehicles. So the new model he is coming out, which is gonna be an increase. That he probably won't absorb like he absorbed in one of these, because they already have the chassis. And timeframe, he doesn't know. What he's gonna, what the timeframe would be, but because they have a chassis right now.
So you'll be able to lock in the pricing with them, then he's gonna square away the timeframe with you.
Yeah, and he's thinking maybe less than a year.
And you'll continue to use yours until then?
Yep.
And, um, is the three thirty-nine minus the fourteen already?
No, that's, it's three fifty, thirty-five.
Let me show you the chart now.
Okay.
Eleven's part of the, brings it down to the.
Okay.
It's a Ford five fifty chassis, a four-wheel drive. You know, we haven't had a four-wheel drive truck before.
So, you know, winters and some of these challenging driveways where I mean.
Even challenging dirt roads, you know, the mud season and everything else.
So. You know, we should make every attempt we can do to get someone to also have a four-wheel drive as a. As a bonus. We have had driveways in the past we couldn't get out. We plowed them ourselves or we had to pro- agent come plow us, so. Yeah, I think the four-wheel driver is worth it. The five fifty chassis seems to be everybody's buying. Either five fifty, the four fifty.
And that's a Ford five fifty?
He's brought us a demo. He's the only guy that bring us a demo, so we've all driven it.
Yeah.
Taken it out and. It handles good, goes good.
And it'll work with all the new, um.
Yep.
Stuff that you've got.
At the factory, they mount the, uh. The braces and the floor.
Yeah.
And they make the mounts, so I was just on bolts. And puts it right in his truck.
All that new stretcher stuff that we purchased will work, right?
Yep. That's part of the contract. It's in the, in the contract.
John, I don't see any negatives to going with it. I think, uh, I don't know what Chad's gonna think, but.
He just delivered his fifth ambulance to Ware. Two weeks ago.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, they've nothing good to say about him. He sells a lot of ambulances. They're out of Plainfield, Mass. He also sells, uh, fire apparatus. He's, he's a Rosenbauer. Deal, which is one of the top, top trucks now in the. Fire world, but he's the type of guy that if it's not a good quality or something, you know, he, he doesn't sell any bells and whistles.
Yeah.
Pilt his body with extra stuff. Compartments that we didn't have in the other one, but he knows we would need. So it's got some lots of extra stuff.
And radios, I want the radios.
They'll switch them over, no cost, take them down there.
And you don't need to upgrade the radios?
Uh. I gotta see about that. The age of hours are getting up there.
Yeah.
It's a dual-headed radio, so it probably won't be a bad idea, but, uh.
Well, you got a little bit of money.
Yeah, I got a little bit of that. Actually, I just, I had to purchase one, uh. Last week for our new engine.
Yeah.
The one that came in it. We thought we could just reprogram it.
Yeah.
Well, the guy went to reprogram it. It's a different band. It's U H F instead of I band. So I ended up buying a radio.
Oh, boy.
How much is that?
Thirty-nine hundred. I'm gonna take it out on my budget. I can, I can cover that. And actually, he. I've been buying these Kenwoods now instead of Motorola. A lot better price and. They seem to work good. Everybody seemed to want to. So he had one in stock. He didn't think he had one. We came up to reprogram the radio. Obviously couldn't do it, because we're gonna need a new radio. We don't wanna move the one out of the other truck, because I think it's thirty years old. And all those mobile radios that we got from the state. Way back in the days when they gave every town new radios under that interoperability grant.
Which is okay.
They're starting to fail and there's no replacement parts for those Motorola's, so.
Yeah.
Instead of switching that radio, I just bought a new radio. Anyway, he had one in stock. He did it in Friday, so. That, uh. That, that wasn't adding cost.
Running into a couple little things of that. I'll do this to Mike when he put it in his basket, so that when he comes back in to read.
Okay.
We're gonna, I think, make consensus tonight. We're trying not to make any big motions, because he's not here, but just a consensus for you to go ahead and. Do the purchase, I think is fine from us.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, this isn't my area.
We'll just give Mike a copy.
You're happy with it?
Yeah, I, I think it's a good truck and, uh.
I know trucks, I think Ford's a good truck, but I mean, four-wheel drive seemed, that'll be good for you guys and, uh. But you're happy with the truck, I think.
People, people buying Ford and Dodge, front of the Dodge is, time frame, he did Dodge chassis for.
Can I bring up worst-case scenario? If in the event we lose or our ambulance fails and we can't. Get the eleven thousand credit. That still puts us at the three fifty.
Yeah.
Range, we will have to absorb the three hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Does that come all down to everything that we got a letter?
Which I think will be. Fine, but.
Just scoop it up.
He'll come up next week and go over the exterior colors. You can pick whatever you want for colors. Exterior cover, there's a couple shades of red. Uh, most guys want a little darker shade than what we got. So there's some other little things, no charge, though. Like I said, lettering, they'll do the lettering. Uh, they get a guy down there that does it. Uh, we just send them the. Pictures like they do with this engine. And, uh, he's guaranteed if the truck ever has to go back to his shop, they'll come get it, so it doesn't inconvenience us. Give us a loaner, something was down. Yeah, this thing, he's quoted as eleven thousand, so. He's not gonna back out unless we total the thing.
Well, that's the whole point. I'm just thinking, worst case, we can still, we can still buy it.
Yeah, and if it has a breakdown, I'm sure he'll take it.
Yeah, that.
He's not gonna back over.
I mean, looking at the price of the new one, they're gonna be able to get that out probably too, so.
No. He actually upped the price a little when he saw the, uh, the shape goes in, mileage on it. So he originally wasn't giving us that much. Normally those things, you can't get twenty-five hundred dollars for usually an ambulance.
Even at the state auction?
Uh, they bring nothing at the auction. Terrible.
What was that, more than that, that old car that drove?
Yeah, yeah, it's ridiculous.
I don't know how we got that.
Backfuns and stuff, buying, you know, the tool trucks and stuff, that's about any dollar. And the deal is they just, they take them. If they offered some money for them, but they can't get rid of them either.
I might need it at my house. You say, I'm already in the end, just come get me.
So I have to leave the structure in there for you.
Kind of deal, it'd be nice. Actually, the ambulance that. Where I just get rid of, the fire chief bought it.
Oh, really?
From him. Doesn't know why. I said, why did he want to buy it? He says, I don't know. But he opted me.
Come clusters too, maybe?
Uh, he might have wanted the chassis of. It was the old style Chevy forty-five hundred chassis, which a lot of people. Like those old Chevy chassis, so he might have wanted for that.
We can get a little hay wagon.
Some of it, yeah, I don't, I haven't.
I'm gonna say. Twenty-five hundred bucks.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, pretty much for it, so. But, yeah, there's no market for those old ambulances. I was surprised when he said. Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, pretty much for it, so, but, yeah, there's no market for those old ambulances, I was surprised when he said. One thousand dollars.
How old is it, John?
Ten. It's fourteen, it takes another year to get ours, and fifteen years old, we replaced our other one, we tried to do the ambulance in ten years.
Yeah.
Cause he get more use, but, you know, we've got, got over the hump.
Getting past that, I know you're gonna do a, a warrant article for your command vehicle.
Next year.
Next year, now will that be like one of them interceptors, or what will that be?
Probably pickup, four-door pickup truck.
Yeah.
That's what seems everybody's buying, put a cap on the back.
Yeah.
Uh, that seems to be the most popular thing right now, put a command box in the backseat, takes half of the backseat. Or some guys, uh, Loudon just got one, I was looking at that the other night, and he's got it in, built in a toolbox on the side. Uh, so you still get the use of the backseat, but, yeah, that's what everybody's buying pickups in. Cause this thing, you know, you can't haul anything in the back, can't even bring hoes back or anything, call or anything, so that way you still get the use of the pickup. You got all the, you know, those caps they buy, have side doors and they got shelving, put in them, they, they work out pretty good. I'm Manchester, I run them, everybody seems to be around them.
I have seen those on a few towns, I'll have to say that.
Yeah, Canterbury, he runs one, he goes through town every day, the first time I thought it, sorry, that was Manchester, cause it looks just like him, but. Yeah, Loudon just got one, Epsom's got one, seems to be the way to go, I guess.
You gonna go twenty-five hundred or fifteen?
Uh, on these?
I was gonna say, I thought Canterbury was one fifty.
Yeah, for one fifty, most of them are on the Ford one fifties, uh, uh, Loudon's is on a Chevy, that's fifteen hundred.
Yeah, those are pretty reasonable.
Yeah.
They don't take that.
You get them with state bid, get them priced down a little, I know, but that state bid isn't as good as people think it is, uh. As we had a meeting.
Lot of times they have these fleet ones on the lawn, like my company buys them, they're like only forty-four thousand.
Yeah, that bow, he's ordered a new, uh, four-stick truck, Ford F five fifty from the Ponies, and, uh. Your pony's price was cheaper than the state bid.
Wow.
So.
Great shop around?
Yep, and the same thing that guy in, uh, Hillsboro, he sells Dodge and Ford up there, other guys get stuff from him.
Yeah.
Those prices are really reasonable.
Yeah, I think we do a few from him too.
Yeah, so.
The five fifties we get.
Yeah, so that would be that, so, my doors, station.
Yeah.
Uh, obviously wanna get that project going.
Did, were you able to meet with Corey?
I haven't met with him yet, uh, I had, actually, uh, I met with Jeff Trucks the other day.
Yeah.
Had him come over and take a look, uh, just to see, make sure we're gonna do the right thing here, when we cut those blocks out and stuff. Cause we'd like to keep that center beam, you know, center between the two doors.
I bet he can get this, be okay right away.
Yeah, no, 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 so, but, you know, we were, when you cut those blocks on each side of it. You know, that's gonna take the sport away from that centerpiece, even though it's gonna be tight in at top, cause we had a couple people look at it. Conference, but everybody wants a plan, you know, he's saying the like.
The top gable, if you don't connect it by basically strapping, whether it's steel or what, across those other trusses. Then nothing holding that gable either, so.
So, they're thinking a couple L V Ls, sandwiched together, on top of where we cut the blocks, that'll be the two feet. Cause that centerpiece will be right, the height we need to be, cause the blocks will go on each side of it. But those blocks gonna have rerun, cause they're vertical blocks, and how do they stand up, why haven't they fallen down, there's no steel they're sitting on? They're just free standing, so he says definitely, they've reired them or something through the centers of them, and they built it. To hold it, if not, you know, over years, why would they have fallen out of there? So, when they cut that center post, okay, that's basically gonna be free standing.
Yeah.
Cause that's supported by those two rows of blocks over each door.
So where's he thinking about putting the L V Ls up in the truss?
No, sit right on top of that post that's there now.
Why, cause we can't leave the block then?
Because we need two feet, the blocks are two feet thick, once you take the blocks away, there's nothing left.
Yeah, so the block's above the door at two feet?
Two feet.
And how big L V Ls they want, boy?
You can figure that out, you got a foot, maybe two foot one, on top of that.
If you take two feet out and you put a two foot back in, where are you doing it?
It's up over the higher, it's higher than the blocks.
That's what I was asking you, so it's up in the truss?
Not that far up, no, there's all kinds of empty space.
There is?
Up there, oh yeah, all kinds of space, it doesn't even reach, there's some studs right now, two-by-sixes.
Yeah.
That hold this outside sheathing, and, uh. The vinyl siding on the outside, on that, and there, bolted, or there's a sill there. Two-by-six, and that sits on that two-by-six.
Yeah.
So, this L V L will go up against those two-by-sixes that are there now, on the outside wall. Plus, sandwich a couple together, and that will give us the width we need to be flush with the outside of that center post.
Yeah, cause right now, we've got our doors there. And you're saying that these, there's more than two feet up here, John?
There's two, yeah, there's a lot more than two feet, cause it's two feet of brick, and then you got the vinyl siding, there's plywood up in here.
Yeah, but it's up in the gable, isn't it?
No, uh, it's a little below the gable.
It is?
Yeah, but this.
I drove by, I just thought there was only two feet.
Yeah, no, no, so this row of blocks, this is the center post, right?
Yeah, pretty good as a center post.
And we got blocks right here on both sides, these are the blocks, so they're gonna cut these right here. So this top right here, well, where we wanna be, that's that top height, so if you put two. L V Ls on top of that. Yep, and it'll leave, plus, it'd still be below those, there's some studs, two-by-sixes in through here that hold the. Plywood on the outside, but when we get to the beams, there's enough room to put one behind the beam. And one in front, so they'll be able to tie into that beam right there, but his issue is. You know, even though this beam will be sitting on here, uh, over time, with those doors. You know, working on that center post over a period of time, that that'll, this that, this is gonna need to be braced. So he was thinking of sending some angle line at first.
Backside of it?
Oh, first, up to the beams, go back with a beam like this.
Diagonal.
Right, tie in it, then he got looking, you know, nah, he says that would be, you know, then you're gonna run up and tie into those girders. So now, yeah, he's thinking a beam right up the outside, structural piece of steel.
Now, why not inside?
Inside the station?
Yeah, inside the station, okay.
It'll just run right up, and then the trouble is on the ends, there's nothing left, when you cut those blocks off.
Yeah.
There's nothing there, but a couple bricks that they've tapered down, cause of the way the girders are, so they're down to like two inches of brick. The time you get up.
To the L V Ls.
Yep, so he wants to do two over here too.
Yeah.
Do the same thing, and that'll brace, brace everything.
And he's gonna give me a drawing for it?
Yep.
And we'll let Cohen do the steel or whatever?
Yep, so, he says that'll be plenty strong enough.
Good.
Cause you're just supporting that L V, L V Ls, just supporting the, the motor.
And Corey was okay giving your price to demo it?
I haven't, I haven't talked to him.
Oh, I thought you said you about.
No, no, because, trying to get stuff coordinated, you know, uh. It's gonna have to be, uh, logistics to get it all, we don't want the thing open up for a month or so long in, but. He gets it cut out of there, and then the doors are out of service, cause you're not gonna be able to use the doors once it's cut. Then you gotta try to coordinate whoever's gonna do it, to get in there, get the beams up, and then the door guy says he needs. Little time at all to get up there and put the doors back on, so even if we don't get the outside finished up. You know, cause there's gonna be some change in the outside, the vinyl siding, whatever, cause we're gonna take that row of brick out of there, the two feet of brick. At least we can get it buttoned back up and get back in it, you know, so just can't go on for, you know, all summer, we can't be out of there. I mean, it's gonna be coordinated, so.
You line Corey up, he'll come and cut it out, and you should have the guy there the same day or the next day.
Yep.
Put it back together.
So, that's what we're trying to get, everything done, get a drawings, so whoever does it knows what they're doing, cause right now it's kinda like, eh, I don't, I wanna do this. I wanna, uh, it's gonna be.
Time, you'll have to make sure Cohen has the steel ready to go.
Yeah.
Yep, so that has to be ordered.
Yeah. Cause they'll have to weld flanges on the bottom.
Floor, I think, so they'll just, you know, drill them right in the concrete.
Pretty full cut sheet on that, so they'll do it right.
Yeah.
So.
I talked to floors in that.
Hmm?
Concrete, I think.
Yeah, concrete, yeah.
So they'll hopefully be able to anchor them.
Now, the last thing.
And then, well, anchor going up, you know, so many places up the wall, that brick wall, and then that'll be tied into the.
Yeah, they'll have to bolt it through them with some big plates, probably.
Screws, he was saying whatever screw they'll use, it'll be fine, and same thing on the side ones, they go up, and then, cause at the end, they'll be tied into the. For the beam.
Now, uh.
So just holding the track, which, you know, doesn't weigh too much, and the motor, that's all that beam really needs to.
Yeah.
There's no spore.
There's no string, there you.
There's no bound weed or whatever.
Trust takes care of that. Last thing is you took the sign down finally.
Yeah, actually.
What do you wanna do, what do you wanna do with making a new sign up, I know we had talked about it.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the sign is something to update.
Now, do you wanna use the other one for a template, or what do you wanna do for?
No, you can't now, because it's gonna be changed, with raising the doors where some of it used to cover.
You wanna wait till we're done and then measure it?
Yeah.
Well, just get Tom from SUSA Signs or whatever.
Yeah, they were really easy to come up with.
Just put on what you want, whether you wanna have.
Then they give you pictures of, and if you approve it, you have different options and.
Are we gonna do, um.
Someone, uh, they have a little.
Are we gonna do Dunbar and Safety Council?
Saying any of that, or Fire Police, Dunbar and Fire Police with the Town Seale.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I'm sure there's, people have different ideas on it, but, like you said, safety building or.
Well, do you want, do you wanna design, or you want the school kids to do it?
Somebody else than me. But, uh, yeah, I mean.
I would think that we could start working on the concepts with SUSA, so we gotta get it approved and get that. Because we're gonna know the dimensions up there pretty much, so.
Right.
Soon as he does the drawings, we can get the sign, he might be out six, eight. Get in here there. It might be out six or eight weeks on the sign, you know.
I mean, that's not a big thing, getting that thing buttoned back up.
Like to do it out of that PVC material, if.
What you're doing here.
Cause that plywood, we had that thing painted two or three times, we used the best fricking paint you could buy, and marine plywood, and it's still weathered. I mean, we had to let it two or three different times with wood, and you just can't keep the paint hanging on it, so, yeah, it's gotta be some kinda product, yeah.
You're all happy with the new fire truck?
So far, haven't got it in service yet, got little, keep running those, some little issues, like the radio, the truck. In New York, you don't, they don't use license plates, so when I'm gonna get it registered, I brought it down, put the plates on, I go. Where the heck the license plate go on this thing, never had plates on it, so I called the guy, I didn't, yeah, what do you even think of that? So, you know, a little thing, but something you had to do, I had to buy a bracket.
Is the registration free on those?
Yeah, basically I pay two, eight bucks for a plate, eight dollars, I pay two plates, uh.
The state portion?
Yeah, so, you know, then we gotta find a place to put the plates, and then trying to get driver's tram, or trying on the pump, and then. Thing's got so many bells and whistles on the thing, it's got, yeah, this command screen, that comes on, tells you everything about the truck. What, you know, engine pressure, oil pressure, water temperature, air pressure. Seat belts aren't buckled, so if you get in the seat and your buckle's not buckled, it gives you an alarm, shows you a little seat. Every seat in the truck's on this screen, goes through these screens, so anyways, we're gonna train another, and. And we have all the doors all set, so we went to drive it home, and the screen pops up, it shows three doors open, compartment doors open. Which are open, right, and do not drive the truck, the red light goes off, you get these warnings, buzzes. Because it's showing a door open, which the doors are open, so you can silence the alarm, that's all you can do, you can't clear the screen. You can't shut the red light off that's flashing in the cab, so we brought it home, we've been playing with, called the guy at the factory, oh, the guy we bought it from. And, uh, there are magnets that are on the outside of the dome, they go down, the magnet closes the switch. And shuts the lights off in the compartment, and shows the door shut. We played with that thing, we've unplugged them, so then he says, pick your phone, put it on video, put it in the compartment. Close the compartment doors and see if the lights are going out. So we did that, sure enough, the lights go out when you close the door, so then he said, we used the magnet, we got a magnet. Put a magnet up against all three, cause it should only throw in three compartments, three in the driver's side. You put magnets on the, on the switches, shuts the lights off, like it's supposed to, compartment lights go off. But we can't clear the screen, so we've called them down there, they've been really nice down there, cause he's down there, we're up here. And, uh, I said, there's no reset thing on the screen, I mean, I guess if you had a computer, there is a connection. Where you could plug into that command screen, I mean, it's, you know, you know the door is a shut, so it's not gonna, I mean, we've been driving. But it's just, you know, uh, and we can silence the alarm, but you still get do not drive warnings and that.
Like a loose water.
Yeah, so.
Loose connection.
I know, I would be, I've been checking to see how much we'll have computers is to plug in there and delete them, or clear, clear the codes.
But, you know, I don't think you have one that, so anyways, we called, I called him again the other day, I said, hey, look, we gotta figure this thing out. He goes, I'll, I'll send, maybe the switches are bad, even though they seem to be working, so he's sending us three switches and three magnets. We'll try that, you know, but it, it doesn't seem that that's the problem, cause I said to him, I go, there's gotta be some way to clear that screen. You know, and, uh, so, I have to, I have to take it, a dealer has the right equipment or what, but it's kinda just a. Little nuisance thing, but, other than that, I mean, everything else has worked fine in the thing, it had to be, uh. Then we got another little emblem popped up on the dash, and, cause we gotta go through the books, see what they mean, and. But the exhaust need to be regenerated.
You guys can bring it to the fires, take, can you guys run the truck?
I really, so we have to go through the mail, we then had a truck you had to regenerate, you manually have to regenerate the exhaust filter. And the thing, so you park it, we went through the whole thing, how to do it, got to do this two or three times, and then you, there is a button. It does it manually, and then the thing sits there, it can take between twenty and forty minutes to regenerate that, clean that filter.
Yeah.
That thing sits there, I'm high idle, I'll tell you, that thing gets hot, the thing we did down highway, it's.
We would have.
We were playing with that thing, like, why, almost, why don't we throttle it, they took thirty minutes, and it's fine now, so. I don't know, sometimes, goes to the blood.
Burns, burns the stuff up.
It will manually do it sometimes, uh, on its own.
Yeah.
Or you have to ma, I mean, it'll automatically do it sometimes, when you're driving it, running it, I don't know, on a period, clogs up. Or you manually do it, so we manually did it, so that's cleared all that, so the only issue we got now is, uh.
The doors.
Is those doors, and we're starting to get some holes on it, we had readjust the hose beds in the back, and did that Monday night, so. I hope to get it serviced June first, I mean, that's my goal, uh, so.
Do you have a barbecue, chicken barbecue this year?
We are, but we're moving the date.
Oh.
We're gonna try another month, because, uh, June just seems to have everything going on that weekend, and we only do it. The race in Loudon got moved for that, uh, weekend, or something else, can't think of something, had something else going on that weekend. So we decided to, uh, move it, so we're gonna try, uh, then we said in August, why you got a whole home day, something else going on in August. Uh, so we're gonna try September.
And there's a cool.
Vacations are off, people are back home for vacation, uh, and, so hoping to do it the second, third weekend, uh.
Third week sounds good, John.
Hmm?
Third week sounds good.
Yeah, I think that's what, uh, we picked, cause you get a Labor Day weekend, and.
Yeah, right.
Uh, the school's back in session, so.
I gotta get back from Canada.
Yeah, so we're hoping, uh, it'll work out, calling those different months. Cause we're normally selling tickets by now, or, you know, signs up and all that stuff, but just got so much stuff going on. And then we'll get it all worked out.
Okay. Can I answer a question?
So.
No. I'm gonna win this. So, with the work being done on the doors, wouldn't it make sense not to have the barbecue at that?
Oh, exactly, right, yeah, couldn't run into it.
Yeah.
Exactly, uh, plus school in session, I don't know if that's gonna affect it much, but, you know, you get school bus around, kids hanging around there. Already have issue with kids hanging around in front of the fire station.
Yeah, they're having fun over there, I saw three boys hit the night on the bikes.
And asked the police chief to move them, morning, he did, and he seemed to come back, the school. Yeah, and asked the police chief to move them, morning, he did, and they seemed to come back, the school. You know, they, they wait for the bus to go to the boat, so they come over and they stand on the police side, so they can't be seen by the school. Start messing around over there, I was there one day, inside, and they're kicking the back of the doors with their feet, back of their shoes, so I go up. And, uh, don't move on, you know, we don't have to move, really? I'm telling you, go stand on the school property, or go on the other end of the building, you can stand down that way, at least somebody can see you.
Right.
From the school, they all come up here, hang around so nobody can see them, and they're a bunch of wise little punks.
Gotta zip tie them.
And, uh, my, he, there's a couple of kids, two of them, they know the worst ones, so I told Kurt, I said, hey, look, these kids don't belong up at that side of the building. Wait for the school bus to move, plus they're messing around up there.
Yeah.
You know, kicking the doors, giving me crap.
Right.
Uh, so we talked to, talked to, uh, Cherry, and they were supposed to have them wait at the other end of the building. That's the only one that came to town, wanted to build a building there, shelter for them to stand, and, uh.
I didn't get to hear about any of that.
Yeah, I know, oh, they wanna build a shelter for them, to stand, wait for the school bus. Go wait downs, back at the school, you just got shelter down there, you know?
They can all go inside the gym and.
Yeah, they could bus pick them up down there, why do something out on, inside the fire station, they'll be lean to from the way to the school bus.
Yeah.
Go into school and wait, bus shows up, you go out and get on the bus, why do they need to be hanging around outside? You know, no one keeps an eye on it from the school, uh, so, yeah, so they're back to it now, you know, it worked for a little while, and I've noticed it in the last couple of weeks.
So those are high school kids, huh?
Hmm, yeah.
Or could even be middle.
Middle of high school.
Middle or high.
Yeah, but, you know, rude, you know, like I said, yeah, we don't have to move, we can stand here, you can't tell me what to do, you know, all this stuff, you know? We'll go get the police officer and see, you know, and, uh, so Chris was supposed to, they, they, they did work for a while. But again, now they're back over, hanging around on that side of the building, screwing around.
It doesn't matter, make a pavilion, they're still gonna wanna go hide if they're gonna wanna do something, you know?
Yeah, yeah, so, kinda discouraged that.
I'm surprised they don't go way down by, by the police, uh, doors on the backside there.
But, so anyways, you know, keep the place open up when they're hanging around, you know, they'd be in there doing something. Uh, I'm gonna have to hang some tops or something at night, but, uh, hopefully park the two trucks down at the highway bridge. Or leave outside, uh, so, that's all the stuff we're gonna have to work out. We get this done.
Well, what's the, well, what's the plan, you gotta put like a temp fence up to lock it off?
Um, I was just thinking hang some tops at night when they're out there, holders or something.
We have a couple panels, a temp fence we can put up, I mean, it's, keeps the honest people honest, it's not like it's gonna, we can lock it there, but, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah.
Dark building.
Oh, like site construction, temporary metal fence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you only need what, four panels?
Yeah, something, yeah.
A couple of stands, I have that, I can let us, we can borrow it, put it up there, I mean, we haven't, not gonna be able to walk it to the building, it's. Keeps the honest people honest, yeah. Uh, let me know, just send me an email or whatever, and I'll get it out there.
Perfect.
Just so we're clear, you're not building us, right?
It's free.
All right, thank you, John, thanks for coming in, go ahead and get it going. And we'll leave, uh, Mike a copy of that if he has any questions, he can, thanks, he can, uh, call, call John.
When's he coming back?
Next week.
Next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda.
I'm gonna make a motion of. I'm gonna make a motion for that.
Yeah, here you go.
I make a motion to appoint Kurt McDermott to Town Hall Restoration Committee with a term ending March twenty twenty five.
I'll second Justin's motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Guess that's kind of mute point tonight. Here for that waiting pile. Um, okay.
I'm reading the next one.
Okay, now the, the, um. Why am I town clerk on this pile?
To the, the agenda's all in that clip.
In this clip, right?
Yeah, take that big top clip off, it's all in there. Why am I, uh?
What you're looking at there is a snapshot?
Well, I'm looking at the town clerk certification.
You just did it, oh no.
I missed it somehow in here. Agenda number four, and it's not flying up with us.
Yeah, that's, that goes with it, see that, read the whole thing, that's part of it.
That? Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
All right, we need to make a, um, a motion tonight to correct the meeting minutes. Um. Let's see the date, we're selecting meetings from eleven sixteen twenty twenty three. And the board have formed it on May sixteen twenty twenty four.
Which is today.
Yeah, so.
So basically, this, all this paperwork here is requirement for the Kelsey Road.
Turnaround.
Turnaround, and the attorney would like us to record all of these documents with the town clerk.
Petition.
So this is, the top cover sheet is a certification form that she will, uh, sign off, recording her records, and it'll become part of our records. Um, there, m- the majority of this is, um, recorded at the registry, so that will be, um, secondary.
So the biggest, the biggest thing is, the board of selectmen made a motion to approve it, and in our meeting minutes, it wasn't clear that we made that motion. So, we're gonna, um, reaffirm that motion and get it put into the meeting minutes by a motion tonight from Justin and I. And Justin and Mike Connesy are gonna sign it because they're the selectmen that signed it originally for, spoke to originally.
And the only reason we knew is because they saw it on video, it's recorded on video.
Yeah.
And that's how they knew.
And Lane's followed up on all the paperwork, so, I'll make a motion, or Justin, you make the motion, cause you got the paperwork now. Appellini hearing from November sixteenth.
So we're making a motion for clarification of record?
Yeah.
Um, for the public hearing held on November sixteenth twenty twenty three, for the petition to lay out the turnaround area located at the west end of Kelsey Road.
That's good enough.
Sure.
I'd say, I'll second the motion. And Lane, if you need to clarify anything as far as writing that motion up, I guess, just go ahead and do it.
I think that's pretty clear.
I don't think we need to dig into it too much before we do what that night. Okay. Going on to the next item on the agenda, I'd like to make a motion to accept per R S A thirty one colon ninety five dash B, Roman numeral three, B. To accept unanticipated revenue of a hundred dollars from Health Trust for wellness-related workspace initiatives. And in this, uh, we have a letter from. The police chief, Chris Ramilar. And he wants to use it for, uh, wellness training in his, um, area of work. I have no issue with that, I'll second that, motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
If you want to sign that, I'll make there, for you and Lane's stuff. Okay, item number six on the agenda. Wanna do that next R S A, Justin?
Yeah.
Last one on there.
I'll make a motion per R S A thirty one, uh, colon ninety five dash B, Roman numeral three, paragraph B. Accepting unanticipated revenue for four hundred and twenty dollars from old home day vendor fees collected to fund additional costs for the old home day event.
I'll second Justin's motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That takes care of that. Now we're gonna go to mailbox items. And then we'll be bumping a comment at the end. We'll put this with James then for the, uh, so we'll think so Mike can read it when he gets back. Okay, we need a letter from the library director, director requesting permission to oversee a project. By the girl troop sixty four three one five Dunbar and Bow to create a small fairy garden. The garden would be approximately three by six, on the south side of the town hall building. And up for viewing around May or June, and be removed by fall cleanup in September. She said, see attached photo, and I'll do this to Justin so he can sign it. And they're gonna put this fairy garden within the existing garden that's there, and not affecting any of the plants in there. I have no issue with it. Justin consensus is okay, it's in, okay. All right. We have an email from the building department regarding emails from a property owner in Dunbar requesting support guidance. I've read this email from Donna White in our building department, and read her letter, and I think that Justin's read it as well.
Yeah.
And I think the consensus of the board is that we support them a hundred percent. We're basically gonna stop communicating with, communicating with, uh, a person in town here that's been treating him derogatorily. Same given all the answers he needs. He's not communicating properly with them, so, let her know that she is our support on what they're doing and. Okay, the next one we have in the agenda is a notice from G S S Solar invoicing to remind us that the end. Of the payment contract is coming up, which will require the payment be paid, payment number seventy three. Um, for the full contracted amount of fifty thousand dollars, this is to buy our solar panels, as we've well known since we did this project with them. Uh, we'll be doing this on a town warrant, um, later this year, so that we'll have the payment in the early part of the following year, go ahead. Are they gonna do anything about the footings? That are on the existing ones? Concrete footings, yeah. Um, I think. Prior to us.
I sent them a couple of emails, do you wanna take a look at it, maybe take some photos?
Prior to us buying it, you know, it should be all up to snuff, right?
And just so, and the energy committee's gonna take a look at it further to make sure that it's worthwhile for us to do it. You guys have your own, huh?
I'm breaking it, I'm breaking out a newer spreadsheet now that we actually have some use on there, uh, with the energy committee. And we're also gonna look into possibly adding an additional row of panels on our own, through our energy committee to that existing array. And the reason I thought we'd do that is because once we added the Mitsubishi's for the addition there, we're not actually gonna be covering enough on some of the months. On our electricity bill, uh, including that town hall with a new addition, and if we had additional Mitsubishi's for cooling up on that. Um, floor there, we'll probably need the extra array, so, I think that, uh, we're, we're in progress with that, we've got some time. We're ready, I had a schedule, but it didn't be proactive on it, and know that it's coming down the road. We were gonna originally do a, um, a C I P with them, but I think that coming so close like this, we will just do a warrant.
And this is a super advanced notice, this is still seventeen months out.
And, and just like we always have excess revenues and stuff, and, uh, overages at the end of every year, this is a, a small amount compared to something we've had to juggle. I, I think, you know, people are pretty cognizant about the energy today, so. Yeah. Think it's not gonna be a hard sell, you know?
Yeah.
So. We'll put that back in there. And the last thing on the mailbox item is just this afternoon, we got a, um, an email from the transfer station supervisor. In reference to, um, one of his employees talking with town staff, I'm gonna address that early next week. So I'll keep, copy this with me, Lane?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna just sign it, you know, kind of right up. I'm gonna keep this, um, Joe Solar, I'm gonna keep this one with me. Um, and that's our reading, Lane has given us paperwork for, um, looking at the driveway regulations, so we get our homework done on those.
And upgrading class six.
And upgrading, upgrading our policy so that it's, uh, by the town road agent, not the selectman on those class six sections of road. As our town attorney has suggested.
There's quite a bit of information, I don't know if it will, if you'll be able to go over all of it at a regular meeting, um, as you read through it, maybe you might wanna consider a workshop.
Yeah.
Just so that it gets taken care of properly, just get enough time to really discuss it.
Um.
Yeah, I'll have to review it and figure that out.
I'll bring it back for public comment, Leo, do you have anything this week? Uh, I didn't, I just forgot it. Well, if you think of it, I'll let you come back one more time. Um, Lane?
I just have, uh, I just wanted to report that the auditors were in the office this week, um, they had a very large team, they worked very smoothly together. Uh, their first goal is to tie back, um, our trial balances to the, uh, financial statement that they reported on our twenty twenty two audit, they were able to do that. Um, they had all the information that they needed, and they were done late yesterday, and, uh, so they're, I'm just getting trickling phone calls and emails. At this point, for the questions that they may have, but they really did a good job getting all our data, so that they can work in a quiet space and, um, work on our financial statement.
And Lane's given me a packet of the, package with the auto review in there, to go through a checklist, and I'll work on that this week.
Yeah, questionnaire, yeah.
Um, bring it to Justin.
Right, I just wanna reiterate, the planning board asked again about the driveway regulations, so we really should try and make some action on that at next meeting, so I can bring it to them at next month's meeting.
Okay.
And that is in your packet.
Yeah. And, uh, last week, the lock fits, finally got the six to the library, he'll give us, uh, some new and improved cores, and it really seems to be knock on wood, functioning and working out the way it's going to.
I reprogrammed all the, um, assigned codes, we've had two or three events since, and I haven't heard any complaints, so I think everything's working the way it's supposed to be.
Oh, great, good. And I think that's it, Leo, you got something? I remember, yeah, 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 I was just curious, did I miss a meeting or something? Doesn't Jeff usually come in and give a, a rundown of what he's gonna? He hasn't been in yet this spring. Right, okay, I did miss.
Sometimes, yeah, it's usually in May, almost a hassle on it, public hearing, yeah, root project.
Yeah, usually about this time of year, yeah. I just happened to see him the, the other day on Holmes Road, and I was like, oh yeah, never heard about the road. Yeah, I did check with him, uh, this week, uh, last week, I think I met, met him on one of the roads, and they were going around shoring up the edges of all the pavement. Yeah. That we had out there with all the rain we've had over the last winter and last year, a lot of the road ages, edges on our new pavement. Uh, were getting washed out, so they were trying to address some of those, so we didn't lose the edge of the pavement. Yeah, right, yeah. And they had gone around all town, and, or most of the town, and picked up a brush and a. I, uh, I noticed, uh, tonight, I drove down the Kimball Park Road, and it looks like he did some drainage work there. Yeah. Well, good. And I seen some more drainage road, I forget the name.
Robert Rogers.
And Holmes Road.
Holmes Road too.
Yeah, right. So I drove by there, so, yeah, they've been around cleaning up the edges of the road, trying to get that back in shape before they head onto a bigger summer project. Big project, yeah, right, mm-hmm. I know that we have work still down in Montalona for him to do this summer.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have the Kelsey Road turnaround, or whatever he's gonna do on that road.
I think the, all the guys, the tree guys was be scheduling out there pretty soon.
Sounds like, sounds like that's soon.
So, um, so yeah, so that's the work's there, huh? I was curious. Okay, sounds good, that being said, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting at eight ten.
Second.
Motion for made in second, all in favor?
Aye.